Okay, you're all set.
Okay. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Trustee Cheney?
Here.
Trustee Foster?
Here.
Mary Newhart?
Here.
Trustee Calora?
Here.
Trustee McKnight?
Here.
Isabel Hayes?
Here.
And Benjamin Galey is absent.
Okay. As an introduction, I have just a little thing, and if you wouldn't mind waiting a minute.
Hey Rena, happy birthday.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you.
Happy birthday.
I really appreciate it, thank you.
What was it, twenty-four?
Yes. For ever and always.
I think you're the youngest clerk in Orange County.
Probably. Thank you so much, thank you to everyone, thank you.
I'll put this where it's at.
Thank you very much, I really appreciate it.
You're right here.
I look back when I look up at the camera.
They smell incredible.
Thank you.
Happy birthday.
Thank you very much, it's been a good start to the year, thank you again.
May have a motion to accept the minutes of November third, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved. You can move it. So moved, second?
All in favor?
Aye.
And motions accept the acceptance of reports for October twenty twenty-five, the Clerk's Office and Tax Collection Report, Treasurer's Statement of Revenue and Expenditures, Justice Department, Planning Department, Building Department, and Department of Public Works. All reports are on file in the Clerk's Office.
So moved.
And do I have a second?
What's going on, guys?
Once there's a second, I have a comment I'd like to make.
Okay. Can I have a second, please?
I'll second.
Yes.
You moved it, didn't you?
No, I didn't.
Oh, no, Mary.
That was your last one.
Yeah.
Yeah, just the DPW report is lacking the work order report that we're supposed to get.
Mm-hmm.
I contacted the supervisor today, and he will be getting that to us, he said either today or tomorrow. And I didn't see it today, so I'm expecting we should receive that tomorrow, so that their report would be complete.
That's good, thank you, appreciate you following up on that. And a motion for au-
There we go.
Oh, all in favor, I'm sorry.
So should we accept it pending?
Pending.
I don't think we need the change, it's just the notifications, you know, yeah.
So we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And, sorry. A motion for authorization to pay all approved and audited claims in the amount of three, six hundred and sixty-three thousand fifty-nine dollars and twenty-seven cents.
Oh, ninety-seven cents.
And ninety-seven cents, I'm sorry.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And Chief, you have something to-
Just a couple things, our officers are participating in No Shade November again this year.
They look great, by the way.
What's that?
They look great. It's kind of a shock.
I don't do it, it's like ten years to my days. But, so they're each paying a hundred dollars, every employee pays a hundred dollars not to shade for the month, will also be reaching out to the public to go along with us and contribute, and the money this year is going towards breast cancer research in honor of a town hall employee that's fighting a good fight.
That's great, thank you.
We've begun the overnight parking enforcement for the winter, so just a reminder to the residents that that remains in effect until April first of twenty-six. The police department is receiving the appreciation award this week at the Chambers Gala for Apple Fest. And the investigation into the graffiti at the skate park is ongoing, but we have made one arrest last week of a juvenile. That's, that matter will be heard in the family court, but we are looking into other individuals and other incidents, so it will be ongoing. But we do have, we do have one arrest of probably the main person.
Very good, thank you.
That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Chief.
Thanks.
Under correspondence this evening, we have a report from village engineer Keith Woodruff regarding the special use permit renewal application received from New Singular Wireless PCS LLC AT&amp;T. And under discussions this evening, we have a discussion on Stanley Demming Park and the overnight parking. Right now, based on our code, there is really no overnight or after hour parking allowed in any of our parks, except in, in case of permission granted by the village board. And so, there are many ways we can take this. And Barry, you've been kind of mulling this over in your head. We've been discussing it somewhat, but there seems to be three, three paths.
Yeah, I mean, I guess just in looking at it, there is not a lot, we, I mean, we can't take the deep dive now for things, so we have to find kind of an immediate, an immediate fix as to how we can do that. I guess, and I don't even remember whether this was one of the three, but one of them is to just kind of let it be like we were letting it be the last couple of years, I think it's been somewhat commonly known that, especially among the residents of apartments on South Street, that, you know, Stanley Demming was an option for them, where they could park and be ticketed. I mean, it has presented some difficulties during the year, or during the season when there is a snowfall, because, you know, they, you'll see a car in there every once in a while that's totally snowed in, plowed in, and seems, seemingly sits there for weeks. And I think, as the mayor's mentioned before, you know, we've had some vehicles that have been in poor repair, and maybe not drivable, and questionable registration, and inspection stickers. So I think that Rena sent us an email today, and I think she pretty much represented the options that exist for us. And one would be to allow the, and maybe I should have you, you want to explain it? That your two options are-
You're doing a great job, but I'm happy to just-
All right. Yeah, chime in anytime. So one would be to allow it, put signage in, and basically, you know, it'd be there for first, first come, first served basis, temporary overnight parking allowed between the hours of nine PM and six AM. And then the other one would be to have signage that reads "permit holders only," temporary overnight parking permits between November first to April first, between nine PM and six AM. And, and then, you know, the, each of the, if it's permit parking, each of the spaces would need to be marked. They'd have to come in, file for a permit, the permit would have to be issued. And we'd have to come up with a cost for the permit, it'd put an added burden on the, on the Clerk's office. So, were those the three, Michael, or did I miss something?
I think that's it.
That was two options.
Well, the other option was kind of just let it flow, and not, and not, not ticket anybody that's there.
So what is the, I couldn't quite understand from the email what the nature of the complaints is. Is, are people complaining that people are parking and taking up space, or are people complaining about getting tickets, or both?
People have been getting ticketed, and, you know, based on our village code, that's correct, they should be, because there is-
How many, how many people?
I think three or four.
Is that enough?
Which is, which is about the capacity that we generally see-
Right.
-parked there during the winter at night.
My concern about the first, the, or I guess option two, which is blanket allowing it, is the potential for abuse, and for people to just be, that's a, it's parking for the park, it's not parking for people to just put their cars. It's for park usage.
But in the hours that the parks are not open, I think it is okay to allow people to use the space between the hours of, until six AM, and then have remove their vehicles.
But they're not doing that, right, like, there's, they, there's, what's that one, like, utility truck is like always at Stanley Demming? Or was always at Stanley?
No, no.
Been there in a while, but-
We've also had complaints, though, and the court is dealing with some tickets of people who live in the nearby apartments, and so they in the past have used that parking just as their overnight parking, when the rule goes into effect, so.
And there's no signage, there's, there's nothing that indicates what's up?
You can or can't.
You can or can't.
Yeah, I guess that's the issue, too. My concern would be if we open up for permit parking, then how do you, is it first come, first served? Do you give, you know, first dibs on people that live in the apartments that are closer, like, how would you handle that?
I think we'd probably have to handle it similar to the way we're handling the other permit parking.
Right, which we have a waiting list, depending on how many spots you wanted to make it like that, or-
That's crazy.
Or the other suggestion is just make it like the twelve-hour CBS lot in a sense, but again, only between those hours of nine PM to six AM.
The other option is we could amend the zoning code to not allow it to be consistent with the other parks. And because we can do, I believe, home rule, doesn't have to go to a public hearing.
Well, it's already not allowed per our code, right, and, I mean, it basically, it's, um-
Except with the-
Oh, without special-
Exceptions may be pre-authorized by the village board, so it already is not allowed.
So it reads as a permit situation, because how do you grant exceptions through a permit, right?
Or an exception, I would, I would think, but again, that would be for our council, that you would be able to possibly just put up a sign, temporary pre-authorization by the village board to have overnight, temporary overnight parking just in those hours, until maybe you come up with a better plan for next winter.
I think temporary is the operative word.
But isn't there parking behind those apartments, they have a parking lot.
I, I think it's people on South Street in multi-unit houses. There's many apartments along South Street, from like Second to Third Street, most of those houses are, are apartments. On both sides, yeah.
Could I ask the Chief if he has any thoughts?
I was thinking that, too, yeah.
Please do.
I mean, mine are, it defeats the purpose of the overnight rule, the village has to maintain that parking lot as well.
And in the past, we've done a workaround for that, given that the vehicles are off the street.
So I issued a pause on enforcing that after notification from the DPW that they were, for now, allowing it until then, meaning-
Yeah.
You're correct, it's the houses between Second and Third that utilize that.
Can, can you say more about what you meant by "it defeats the purpose"?
Well, we're enforcing overnight parking so that when there's a storm-
You can plow.
-the area is unobstructed.
Yeah, that, I mean, that's kind of my perspective, I'm not sure I understand why.
I think it's a bit of a hardship for the people on South Street that normally, from April to November, park on the street overnight.
But isn't there, there are, there are lots in, within the village, that are permit lots within the village?
But a lot of them aren't overnight.
Right, and they're on, on the other side of the village.
Spring Street.
CBS.
So if you live on South Street, you're coming home from work with groceries, you have to park on Spring Street and walk to South Street. I mean, theoretically, according to the code, each apartment should have, what, two parking spots? Is that correct? Theoretically.
Theoretically.
You what?
Each bedroom, I think.
But some have been there for so long, they've probably grandfathered before that level of code was written.
So if the, I did pull up the code, thank you for sending the section. Ninety dash, chapter ninety, section three, where it does mention for, that you can't even use the park from nine PM to six, six AM. And then it has a section about parking, I think aligns to the same time, so it sounds like it, it's in place, where there's ambiguity is, how is, how is an exception granted, right, is that through a permit, or is that-
So for example, there has been permit parking allowed in the parking lot by the pavilion in Memorial Park. There are, you know, there were, I believe Leo Katie's came to us when his wife was very ill and needed a place for a car, an extra car. Every so often, Warburg Grove asks, makes a request. So.
I think the permit would make the most sense, because once-
And you have control.
Once it's known that it's going to be allowed, then if it fills up with the people that are the ones who need it now, aren't the ones who get the permits, then, or don't get the parking because people are there, at least that they got an opportunity to get the permits, it's for them.
And or what's, what might work, too, is then we can designate those spots, so it's not like a missing tooth, like you have a car here, a car there, which would make it very difficult during a storm.
I just feel like if we're, if it's known that we're looking the other way, then anyone will park there, and those people that need the permits will not be able to park there.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think, if it's in the code, I think it's very bad precedent to set, to say we're going to look the other way in terms of enforcing our own code.
And then we would know at night, looking at it, if there's a permit, we wouldn't know.
Right.
Right, and then-
Otherwise, we would, we wouldn't enforce it.
If, you go, Barry.
I, I don't disagree with what you said, Carly, but my interpretation of ninety dash three, I think that the parking spots, it, it, it's focused on use of the park. And the parking spots in front of there, that's an ambiguity, it's unclear whether that's street parking, you know, pull-in street parking, or is it use of the park?
It's the only parking we have for that park, I would think, it's proximity-
But we can't restrict parking there during the day to anybody who isn't using the park? There's no, no provision in place?
No, I agree.
Yeah.
But unless we have a permit, and those people come forward, and the permit is only for parking overnight during this period of time, you know, from-
Before out, really.
Right.
Yeah, that was my question, if we do permits, is it going to be like seasonally? Because going there during rec program, pick-up and drop-off is insane.
It would have to be seasonal, I think. Yeah, because it's, these are parks-
Overnight, overnight, right in front of the place.
Right.
It's, it's park parking.
So it would have to be a seasonal permit.
Are there any other areas similar to this that we should consider seasonal parking permits?
No, I think most of the rest of them, you know, are within reasonable distance of either CBS or Chase.
And on that side of the village, on Wheeler, Spring, it's twelve-hour, twelve-hour-
The bottom of CBS.
Bottom of CBS.
I meant the bottom of CBS, not the top.
So it's twelve hours already?
Yeah.
I mean, as you pointed out, Barry, there's only a handful of people that use it.
Right now.
Right now, right.
Yes, I mean, so, I really, you know, don't think we're going to get a lot of interest, much more than what we've experienced in the past and what we're seeing this year, so it's going to be maybe three to six.
Yeah, I would be in favor of the permit approach. I know that it's got an administrative element to it, but we don't, I, I think it's problematic to just open it up because of the potential for abuse, and also it's a slippery slope in terms of the use of the park parking, and I'm also not, I'm very not in favor of not following our own code.
I agree.
I know we had a request to open this parking lot on-
Wheeler.
Wheeler, for permit parking. Do we think that doing these spots for permit is going to sort of open us up to-
I would say let's wait and see, but it's already twelve-hour parking there, so it's already, you know, had, and it's not, so this is specifically park parking.
Okay.
And I think that's where, you know, there's, there's a concern.
Okay.
I think we have to actually act on it tonight, because it is in motion already, I mean, it's something that seems to be needing our attention.
One question I have, the whole point is that from a certain time to a certain time on the street during the winter, the person can't park there?
Right.
So do the hours of that match up with the hours of the, how much, like, the time that they'd be able to park in that designated spot?
Yeah, because if you can park on the street until-
Can you park until that?
Two AM, real technically now, from two to-
Six.
Two AM to six AM is when it's enforced, so there's-
For the winter.
Anyone who's parking, they would be parked there already.
Okay.
And then it just wouldn't be-
Yeah.
If they have a permit, it wouldn't be enforced from-
Just want to make sure that wasn't a limbo time, where they wouldn't know where to go.
The limbo time is really up until two AM.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And park hours is really also what, what shapes it.
Right, and the park is closed at dark.
At dark, right, which is like three o'clock.
And the code also says, though, that no one's supposed to be in the park, and found, you know, in or around between nine, nine PM and six AM. So I don't know if that helps any, too.
Do we know the people that have been parking there, is there a way to contact them and encourage them to file for permit? Or we just gotta-
I, I think-
Put it out there and probably get the message.
That's something that we have to probably put notices on their windshields.
Okay.
Right.
But I guess I would opt for just allowing temporary overnight parking without the permit. I don't think it's going to be a problem, and if it is, we can, we can create the permit system for next year, you know, I mean, we're kind of in the middle of things, put the signage out, allow it, put the signage out there, and then they wouldn't, they'd be confident they wouldn't get ticketed. I think there's, you know, I've been talking with Melissa and others on this, and one of the, one of the issues that she's been having, and it's especially with broken down or possibly abandoned vehicles, or vehicles that are just left in one spot, that we also should restrict parking for longer than twenty-four hours in any spot. Streets where, or, or parking lots. And that would then give her the authority to record when a vehicle was noticed as being there. And usually she gives it a couple days, and then she'll photograph it, but we really don't have any way for her to be able to ticket that, that vehicle unless there are other violations associated with it.
What's the justification not for having them, because it sounds like we've already, we already know who these folks are, they've been ticketed, they're frustrated, but what would the justification be for not going ahead and making it official and communicating that they, you know, when they do that, they get issued some kind of something, like, maybe even like it's a letter for now, saying that they can park there, and we keep their, their tag number, and then we communicate, but you need to know that you can't park in the same spot for any longer than twenty-four hours at a time. And then all of it is like clear and documented.
Well, the signage would do that, so the signage would give them the assurance that they wouldn't be ticketed as long as they were complying with what the sign says.
I don't like this, I don't, I don't like it, I feel like they, we need to do like a permit instead of just having like a blanket.
If you had a snowstorm, too, just another thought, because people, again, if there's a storm, are suddenly looking for places to park, even if they did or didn't have a spot going into the winter, at least it would be available to them as another place close to home to park.
Yeah.
Without having a permit.
That's the point, without having permit.
Are we concerned, I'm re, re, rereading this ninety dot three, are parking lots considered park facilities? Because I don't know if they're called out specifically as a lot.
My feeling is if they're inside, if they're within the park, you're not allowed to be within the park.
But is that, is that parking lot part of the park facilities?
That was my question, that, you know, is it, is it parking associated with street parking? Or is it physically in the park?
I mean, if you look at the, the way the curb goes, it is, it is inset. So are we just, are we just assuming then that that's part of the park facilities? Because I think that, that matters semantically between whether it's a park facility or it's a village-owned parking lot that happens to be next to a park.
There are differences in the, like, Memorial Park, you have to go through the park to access the parking lots. In this case, you're just driving off the street to access the parking spaces at Stanley Demming.
Why else would the parking be there if it was not for the park? And it's on the same property.
We're not talking about nine in the morning until nine at night, we're talking about two AM to six AM.
But people could just leave their cars there.
No, I know, but wasn't your question just now is how, was your, maybe I'm misunderstanding the question, was the question, how do we know that this parking is park parking?
Well, right, it's not, it's, okay, it's not, it doesn't appear to be designated as like a separate parking lot. It appears to be part of a park facility, because it's next to it.
It's not.
It's the only parking for that facility.
Yeah, it's not really set up as a parking lot.
But my point is, is it tied to what Isabel was saying before, is it tied to park hours? Or would it be tied more to how we, how we govern the other official lots, like South Street and Spring Street? Because those are, those are different hours, I think to your point, you were asking if there's a mismatch in, in hours, and there, there might be some ambiguity there. But the other way to do-
I don't know that there's any signage at Stanley Demming at all relative to the park.
No, there's none.
Yeah, so that's something that has to be, yeah.
And we can call it the Stanley Demming Park Parking.
As long as it's in the code, you can.
Well.
The other thing to consider is, if it's in the code, as we've seen in this section, we put us, we make it clear with a sign that there's no parking overnight. Maybe it feels a bit draconian, but it is how it's written.
Unless, unless they have permission from the village board.
And also, we have, as you pointed out at the outset, Tom, we have the ability to change this part of the, uh, we have the ability to change the parking and traffic part of the law, which is where we have to do this, as opposed to it being the part, in the parks, because the parks, I believe, we don't have the latitude without going to public hearing to make any changes. Am I right on that, Rena?
Well, I, I was just going off of where it says "exceptions must be pre-authorized by the village board," in, in the Parks Chapter.
Mm-hmm.
So I was thinking of it as the exception for now, to just temporarily deal with the situation, and then maybe over the summer, come up with, and the language you want to see in the code, to change maybe parking regulations.
We'll forget about it. We'll forget about it.
But the code now allows us to do exceptions for the specific people that need it.
That's true.
So we already have a mechanism to allow them a permit.
I mean, I-
A blanket exception nullifies the code.
Yeah, I'm, I'm concerned about a blanket, um, permission to, to park. Uh, I mean, I think it, it just, it's against the code, it leads to abuse. I mean, I just think, I mean, we're only talking about a, a small number of permits. I don't even think we should have a fee for it. I think it's a, you know, just a gracious, uh, way of saying, okay, yes, you're in a limited parking area and you can u- utilize this. We never, um, had a fee for the parking for Warwick Grove up at the Pavilion Parking. So I just think that it's a, um, I don't know. It's so few, it's, it's not a lot of money and it's, it's so few hours that, um, I don't think how it should be a real reach.
I, I guess contrary to that, I would say you need to, uh, make people put some skin in the game, otherwise you're gonna have people who may, maybe I'd use it once or twice coming in and getting a permit. And possibly if enough of them do that, somebody who really has a need for it may not be able to get a permit because there are none available. So I think that, you know, even a minimal, uh, fee would, would be, uh, I guess more protective of people who really need it and really wanna use it.
The Chase parking lot for the permit parking, not the tenant parking, the ones who have it ready through Saturday during the ten hours during the day for the businesses, it's sixty-eight cents a day. So fif, it's a hundred and fifty-one days for November first through, um, April first, it comes out to a hundred and two dollars and like sixty-eight cents. I would, if you're gonna go that route, that's why I put in that email, maybe just make it a hundred and five to make it even for people who come in with cash. We do see a lot of people who come in now for the Chase lot, like we had somebody come in today who wanted to buy a second pass temporarily for the remainder of the year for one of his employees and was, you know, con- concerned about the fee. So I don't know if you, I don't know if it's fair to have free parking in certain spaces for this period of time with a permit, permit-free permitted parking in some areas and charging in others.
I agree, I mean, there's an administrative burden to the village.
Mm-hmm, that's true.
Is that the, is the Chase parking lot the one that has the waiting list?
Uh, so the Chase parking, it's the First Street lot.
First Street lot, okay.
Because there's so few spaces and I'm not sure how many spaces there are. I mean visually, I'm not sure at Stanley Deming, you'd have to put up a sign, per space number it underneath it, put a little sign, you know, something like, they'll be, they'll be towed there. Um, but yeah, the waiting list for First Street, the, uh, Chase tenant parking is filled right now, but I know that there's an ability to add more tenant parking if we wanted to to the other side where we have permit parking only, like towards the end if, if needed. So there are still spots available there. And the tenant parking, which is the twenty-four hours, as if it was your driveway, is a dollar ten a day.
So I, I guess we're talking about a permit parking, um, and for that period of time, um, and that period of, of month of time and then that period of hours of time. And it would be a hundred dollars for a permit for that. Is that what we're talking about?
If the goal is consistency. I think it makes sense. I think the, the one potential issue is the fact that the village, it sounds like the village has not been enforcing the code for a period of time, but that's not necessarily a fair argument for us to continue not enforcing the code.
Right, well, we haven't been enforcing it and there's been no signage. So the combination of the two, you know, you can't expect, you know, a, a layperson to know what the, our parking code is, you know, when it comes to something like that.
Mm-hmm.
But, uh, but if there's signage, then it's pretty clear, pretty obvious, so.
Hmm, I'm hesitant about the permit because I would, my fear would be that the people that use that, those spots the most or rely on them would maybe not know to get a permit and maybe miss that opportunity. And also I feel like it would put us in a position to revisit selling permits for other parking lots where we're not really prepared to. I think the whole overnight parking, we're gonna have to have a bigger conversation about it. So I think maybe to go through this season just with signage would maybe work just until we're able to have a bigger conversation about it.
Signage that says no parking?
The signage that says you can park here for whatever.
November first.
November first, yeah. Two AM to six AM.
Or expect, I guess we'd expect extended beyond that.
Yeah, then without the permit too, it would open it up for people that do need it. Like say you have a, a guest and, you know, they need to park or, I don't know.
But is it the village's, is it the village's responsibility to, uh, attend to the unique parking needs of every, like, abode in the village? Because some people have multiple, like they, they have, there are very, like the one gentleman was in here and he said he had what, like five vehicles?
Yeah.
And like at what point is it unreasonable for us to try to accommodate all of these vehicles on municipal property? That's not, I think our, our goal is to, you know, there's, there's like a code that we enforce that has a minimum amount that is recommended and then beyond that.
Well, I think, um, I went for a ride on this snowplow last year. Um, it's incredibly difficult to maneuver around when there are cars on the street. I think we really need to lend a hand and guarantee that
There's not.
There's not cars in the street. And if people are parking, if people need to park at the park, then I think that's fine. But I have pictures of the view from the window, it's pretty insane.
If you did something like that temporarily, could you revisit it in a month? I mean, could you change it then again if you needed to depart, to permit?
I think it's very difficult to go back on something like that, to just like blanket.
Yeah, suddenly say, I'm sorry, we were just
We were just kidding.
Experimenting.
Also because it's, it's something that you're just exploring now as temporary.
Yeah, there's been a lot of comments on overnight parking and what's working and what's not working and what to do and different communication systems to utilize. Like I do think we're gonna have to explore options and figure it out.
But for now?
For now, I'm confident that next year we'll have a better solution.
But for now, what is the solution for this little conundrum called the Stanley Deming park parking lot?
Well, the questions we do get in the clerk's office are things like you brought up about, um, the holiday season. They have guests, they're not sure where the guests can park. From what I hear, but you, you of course would know, I mean, that the other lots do fill up and then there aren't any spots. I hear all the time that the Wheeler Spring right over here is full at night.
Yeah.
I'm not sure, um, but that's, we get those questions and we're not quite sure where to tell them. It's just sort of like first come, first served, just you have to get to, to those spaces. Um, I don't know if the village is kind of running out of room at night in those lots, um, so.
There's also a park and ride just outside the village and New Jersey Transit. Like public transportation that takes you directly into downtown.
So if I'm coming to visit my grandma in the village of Warwick, you want me to drive to the park and ride? Get on the New Jersey Transit bus and then get off at Park Lane?
I don't want or not want, it's not a want or not want, you know?
Well, it's a scheduled bus, so you might be waiting.
Sorry grandma, running late.
Yeah, but it's like.
You missed it by five minutes, the next bus is in three hours.
And it's negative fifteen degrees out.
Yeah. Village hall, this is your, your problem, my, my grandma's visit is your problem. I don't, I don't think.
Okay guys, we're, let's-
I don't think any of us are aligned right now.
No, not at all, it's so unusual.
We all have different ideas.
Yeah.
I think signage, whatever it's gonna say, signage will definitely help.
But what, what kind of message does it send though? Cause what, so what happened is the officer started enforcing the code and then people complained about the enforcement of the code and then we're just not gonna enforce the code? I feel like that is actually not something that we can do. We either need to, we need to address the issue.
I think it's unclear at the park specifically, cause it's not technically on the street. And there's nothing that says otherwise.
And, and it's been allowed for years, just so that it's clear.
That's the cops.
It's, it's been unofficially granted for years. People that live in those apartments understand that, that is accessible to them so that they have a place to park from November first to April first.
It, I mean, we can, we can codify it by saying that this board is giving permission it's for that temporary parking to happen. So that, that does not break the code, it really follows the code.
Yeah, and I think in part, it is the village's responsibility to make sure those streets are clear so the plows can get through.
Could, could, could the sign be considered consent?
Absolutely.
Temporary authorization by the village board?
Absolutely.
It would have to be a motion and then the sign would mimic the mo, the motion.
But are we ticketing like at six AM so that users can?
Yeah, I mean, if that's what the sign says, I don't know.
Then, then, then you can.
Yeah.
If somebody's there to ticket, you know.
But
Well, they could stay there all day anyway.
What would you get in M four, parking at the park when they're not in the park?
After six AM.
But the park is open at that point, right?
Yeah, so there's no ticket, there's no ticket at that point.
So then you have a car that's staying there that's not using the park.
That's the risk.
Yes, which is why I think we have to permit it.
Which, which, which happens, can happen now in the middle of summer.
But not if you're not allowing someone to park over twenty-four hours in the park.
Well, that can be part of it too. It could also read on that sign, um, twenty-four hour parking not allowed.
Not, not to exceed twenty-four hours.
What about like overnight parking permitted but not during park hours?
We would have to amend one thirty-five dash twenty-one, which is the parking time limited in certain locations and list it out. There, that's exactly where we have CVS lot, First Street parking lot, First Street parking lot, three hour meter parking, CVS lot, four hours. The other CVS lot, well, in twelve hours. So I think we would have to put it to be consistent in this table, which again, home rule, we could just make a motion, I think, and, or maybe that's a resolution.
But those are municipal lots and this, and we're talking about park lots.
Park parking lot. Park facility, it's a park facility.
Right, because they don't have anything for Memorial Park, right?
The challenge I have with this is that, like, we get a lot of complaints about the presence of available parking for park usage. And so if we don't have clear parameters on other, like allowable use of these spaces, it's just exacerbating an issue that we already have, that we already get complaints around. And so right now we have three or four folks that we know we need to accommodate. Why don't we specifically accommodate those people and enforce the code otherwise?
May I ask, so are you suggesting we put a sign that says overnight parking from this month to this month with, uh, permit only? And then extend the schedule fees to mimic the Chase lot, kind of as you mentioned, and put that in the schedule fees? And then use the same permitting mechanism that we already have?
Just be consistent.
And call it a day.
Yeah, why is this specific situation different from our other situations?
That's fair Carly.
And, and then I think the same language would, would have to be used on the Pavilion Parking Lot.
So do them both, because that's also a park parking lot.
Right. Park Pavilion Parking Lot.
Is there another word for parking? Estacionamiento. And we just would have to number the spots to keep everything in order, that's all. I'm just saying, it would just be another, another piece.
All right, so, so we would need a motion to, um, we would need a motion to amend the schedule fees, right? Or a resolution, I believe, not a motion, is that right?
If you're gonna amend it, you have a resolution.
Resolution.
We're just adding a location for the areas of permitted parking, so it's not like a new fee, it's just adding the possible areas.
I think that's all we need to do, right? Because it's already in the code that use of park facilities.
But the, is that, is that? The permission has to be through a, a motion by the board.
You have to accept, make that exception.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, make, make, which exception?
A lot of work.
So we could just, so the motion through the board?
Four E fourteen is what addresses the parking at the park.
So could we make a motion to allow the village clerk to grant permission? Through like the permit process?
You'd have to allow for the exception to be made for those specific number of spaces that you want to designate as the permit parking.
For the certain period of time, right?
For the certain period of time.
For the November through April.
And then you'd have to specify hours too? Two AM to six AM?
Or nine PM, I think.
I mean, that's too tight.
Okay.
Yeah, it, you know, that's
It, you know, I mean,
Two AM.
Nine, nine, nine PM, eight PM to six AM.
After, what about in between park hours? I'm trying to think of like, if you're looking at a parking spot, the easiest way to understand it.
During hours the park is closed.
Yeah, opposite park, off.
But if you don't have a sign raised by the lot saying when the park is closed, then you still won't know.
The chief has to know.
I, I'm, I'm growing a beard in a lot too. I think my concern would be if you're doing this, that there should also be some sort of language in there about removing the vehicle within a certain time period after a storm, otherwise the whole purpose of this code is to clear the, if somebody just leaves their car covered in snow now.
But it's not on the street, I mean, it's in a, it's in a-
No, it's not on the street, but at some point I would imagine the village wants to clear the parking lot.
We do, and we, we've worked around that. If we have, let's say, permit, then we can designate specific parts of that parking lot, that line of parking lot so that they're all consecutive. And so there is kind of a, a mass and it won't really affect the rest of the parking lot, which can be cleared, so.
Well, and all that detail doesn't have to be on the signage, correct? It can just be on the permit, so, and the only signage needs to say that these permits are only for non-open hours, they're open to the public. Like you could have a sign that says open to the public during park hours, parking only available during park hours otherwise, or something to that effect, right?
Of the permit spaces, they would be available to anyone during the park hours, is what you're saying?
Yeah, so the park sign would say parking available during park hours for park use only. And then you have your little sign for the permit parking that is like, you know, available to the public during non, during park open hours or whatever.
So they should move their vehicle out of the lot at six AM?
When the park is open.
Or when the park is open.
Cause it's sunrise to sunset, right?
If they have a permit, you would have their contact information, right? Could you say like, hey, could you back your car out so we could just?
We, we could and they, and TPW could have all that information.
Let me, okay, so let me, let me try to
Okay.
Bring this for a second. So we need to, a resolution for the schedule fees. And Isabel, you mentioned we might need a motion mentioning the exception. However, what you just pointed me to in ninety dash four E fourteen, it mentions exceptions must be pre-authorized by the village board of the village of Warwick. Doesn't, isn't that what we need, it's already in the code? Or do we further need a motion to clarify something?
You have to formalize that you're making the exception for these spaces.
So we have to specify what, number of spaces or any of the spaces there?
You can just say generally the Stanley Deming park, parking spaces.
Okay, so-
Or if you have a number now.
Or could we just Or could we just like delegate it to the office of the clerk?
I think it's gotta be more.
Why don't, why don't we just start out with six? And then if it grows, then.
Okay.
What's the total, um, I'm looking at a map.
If we were hypothetically workshop a motion right now, what do you think it would say?
That that the village is making this exception for six parking spaces to be used by permit holders to be issued by the village clerk's office to use as parking from November first to April first, nine PM to six AM.
November first to.
During.
To May first?
April first.
So. Which spots would it be, the one closer to South Street?
No, the ones closer.
To Park Lane.
Park Lane.
Nine PM.
These guys?
Yeah.
Yeah, the far ones.
We have the fees for a fee.
Are those lines still there?
So Tom, you could add fees if the board wants to do that.
For a seasonal.
And amend the schedule of fees. Create a fee.
But we need a resolution.
A permit. I think you can tie it all in, right?
Mm-hmm.
Do a set of resolutions for.
All right, and amend the schedule of fees to add, uh.
I know, I thought this was.
Well, we gotta find it.
Temporary overnight parking, we can call it, right? Temporary overnight parking?
Overnight park parking.
Temporary overnight. Park parking, is this gonna be silly in our schedule of fees, park parking?
Parking.
Descriptive.
Hardship parking.
Jed, do you wanna name it in the schedule of fees per lot? We we have, um, I don't know how it's shown in the schedule of fees.
Oh, overnight, overnight Stanley Demming parking lot.
Usage. Seasonal. Seasonal usage.
Oh, Mary.
And the aspect of having it moved within twenty-four hours, is that?
Yeah, I think that.
They're not permitted during park open hours.
Right.
You can restrict that, right? How can we restrict that? Anybody can park there during those hours. I, what I would suggest is that the vehicles must be moved by eight AM. At which, Leah, the vehicles must be moved by eight AM. Where they move them to? I don't, I mean, then the street's gonna be available to them.
Well, most of them are going to work. I mean, that's really what what has happened in the past.
Yeah, because already as is now, we don't see them parked, well, with the exception of one or two cars that.
So we should just say parking permits, this is how we're.
Is that our timer?
Time to.
Our time is up with the chief.
Parking.
Chief, I think we're getting close, but you you need to leave.
No, I'm good.
Does this sound like a resolution that makes sense?
Uh, temporary parking permit.
Yeah.
Monday, um.
I still have some hesitation.
April first, nine AM to six AM. And then.
We're we're getting there.
Are you specifying the fee amount in?
In the motion. And then we can.
Has the board agreed to a fee amount?
I think it was a hundred dollars.
Sixty-seven cents a day.
Hundred five, I think you said.
It was a hundred and two sixty-eight, to be exact, if you, a hundred and fifty-one days. I'm just rounding up, make it even, because people don't come in, just they come in with exact change, it's really a pain in the neck for them to try to get change.
So would the motion be to, uh, clarify or to formalize the exception?
I would say to formalize the exception, so that it's on record that the village board is making an exception for these spots.
The exception.
Issuing an exception, right?
Of Village of Warwick Code ninety-four, right?
Ninety dash four.
Ninety dash four. So motion to formalize the exception noted in Village of Warwick Code ninety dash four for six parking spaces to be used by permit holders to be issued by the clerk's office to use for parking from November first to April first from nine AM, six PM, and to amend the schedule fees to add temporary overnight parking for the Stanley Demming parking lot for a fee of a hundred and five dollars seasonally.
Nine PM to six AM. I just want to make sure you have that written.
Thank you.
And are you doing the same for McFarland with a separate motion, same thing, or just in one motion?
Maybe we we should do a separate motion, just change the name. Only because of.
Shouldn't we also reference that this is addressing ninety dash three B?
Is it more, though, Isabel, ninety dash four E fourteen?
Ninety, yeah, ninety dash three B is more about the use of the actual park, it seems.
But that's not the way, it's been interpreted all evening.
Well, the exception, I think, is under fourteen, though, um, which is ninety dash four. More where it says at the bottom, exceptions must be preauthorized by the village board. That's the one that speaks specifically about parking.
Then then they're, yeah, right, no, but then they're gonna have to get a special use permit, or special permit to comply with ninety dash three B. I mean, I interpret that to be use of the park. But some of the interpretation here tonight by others has been the parking lot is use of the park. So I don't know where we are.
I was looking at the definition of park facilities. I don't have a whole code in front of me that might provide some insight in how park facilities is defined.
All right, I have a, I have a motion I I could put out there if we're ready for that. Unless you think it needs to reference something else?
Let's try it.
Okay. Oh, my goodness. I can hold it for when we do motions.
No, let's do it now. While it's hot.
The chief is here.
And the chief is here, right?
Let me just see if Isabel's good with this.
Oh, okay, parking areas is under park facilities.
Oh, it's park facilities. Is that what we're saying? So, oh, geez, okay.
So parking areas falls under the definition of parks and park facilities.
So amend the schedule fees for park facilities, okay. Okay. We make a motion to formalize the exception in the Village of Warwick Code Section ninety dash four for six parking spaces to be used by permit holders to be issued by the Village of Warwick's clerk's office for temporary overnight parking from November first to April first, nine PM to six AM, and to amend the schedule of fees for park facilities to add temporary overnight parking permit for Stanley Demming temporary parking from November first to April first from nine PM to six AM for a fee of a hundred and five dollars.
I I think you should probably have specifics, like chapter ninety dash four E fourteen, because that's, that's what we're addressing, right, Isabel?
Ninety dash four.
E fourteen.
Dash, dash E dash fourteen? I don't know how you.
A parentheses, so ninety dash four, parentheses, capital E, parentheses, fourteen.
Okay, should we try this again?
I don't think you need to.
No, no.
Yeah, I think we got it.
Yeah.
If I can figure that out, everybody else is on.
Do I hear a second? Do I hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any more discussion?
I'm just nervous about the permitting. I just think everyone's gonna want permitted parking, and then we're not gonna have any available parking.
We're only talking about six parking.
I know, I know, but.
And it's only for a short window of time. And a short period of the day or night, so.
And it's specific to the park, parking, not the.
Not the.
Meanest little parking lot. I don't really know.
My feeling is we should move ahead without the permit.
Bless you, Barry.
Yeah, I think.
Okay, so we have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
The motion's carried.
And then we do, this, the proposal's similar for McFarland. Is it called the McFarland Parking Lot?
Pavilion.
Pavilion?
I think if you, no, um, right, I mean, Memorial Park Pavilion Parking Lot.
On McFarland Drive.
Come on, Tom, it's just a substitution. One writer and four editors, what's wrong with this picture?
Really?
Faster.
Talk about, too many cooks in there.
My goodness.
There's only five cooks. Six, seven.
Okay, I have a motion to formalize the exception in the Village of Warwick Code Section ninety dash four E fourteen for six Memorial Park Pavilion on McFarland Drive parking spaces to be used by permit holders to be issued by the Village of Warwick Clerk's Office for temporary overnight parking from November first to April first, nine PM to six AM, and to amend the schedule fees for park facilities to add temporary overnight parking permit for Memorial Park Pavilion on McFarland Drive temporary parking from November first to April first from nine PM to six AM for a fee of a hundred and five dollars.
And the reference to the code?
That was, that was in there at the, at the top, yeah.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in, any more discussion?
I do wanna say just one thing. So under, um, ninety dash three, which talks about general use of park, parks and park facilities, it does, so the definitions we've established, established parking areas as park facilities. And then it says under both Stanley Demming Park and Memorial Park, Stanley Demming Park, no person shall enter into, remain, or be found in Stanley Demming Park in the Village of Warwick between the hours of nine AM, nine PM and six AM without a special permit issued by the village. And then for Memorial Park, it says no person shall enter into, remain, or be found in Memorial Park on foot or by vehicle between the hours of nine PM and six AM without a special permit issued by the village. So it already says we have to issue a special permit.
Okay.
Just one.
Clarify. So, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And all opposed?
Nay.
Motion's carried.
Yes, you got it.
Okay. That was a tough one, guys.
Oh, that was tough.
Yeah. Could've gone many ways, so. So we'll move on, uh, well, first we have, um, public comment.
Well, we didn't get there yet.
Chris, you wanna speak to it?
I'm here for Rutherford, the last one of the week.
Yes.
Okay.
I've actually never been to a village board meeting before, so I don't know the process.
Okay, well, you can speak of your application now.
Oh, sorry, okay. So the application is to, uh, remove an existing dilapidated dwelling, um, at thirty, thirty Road, and replace it with an apartment building that contains four apartments, two bedroom each, two per level. The parking is calculated as per the code, we need to provide one handy space, which is currently not on the plan. Everything else, um, is within code guidelines, it is a special use permit, so that's why we're here. That's what I remember right now.
So it's been our stance that, uh, multi-apartment dwellings are commercial entities and that they have to go through the AHRB process.
We did go before the planning board the other day, so they mentioned that as well.
Okay. Very good. Well, we'll move forward, and if we have any other questions when we get to the motion, we'll we'll pose them. Um, Barry, do you wanna start?
Sure. Number one, motion to accept the proposal dated November twelfth, twenty twenty-five from engineering and surveying properties to provide land surveying and engineering services for the design, permitting, bidding, and construction oversight inspection of a proposed water main extension located on Campbell Road and authorize the mayor to sign the same. The total project cost of thirty-six thousand, three hundred dollars to serve as not to exceed amount without prior written authorization from the Village of Warwick Board of Trustees. Funds are appropriated in budget code F fourteen forty point four seven zero zero.
Great.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Number two, motion to authorize the mayor to execute the twenty twenty-six DOT and non-DOT drug and alcohol testing agreements with partners in safety and to authorize payment in the amount of eight hundred and seventy dollars for the twenty twenty-six DOT and non-DOT consortium fees for the drug and alcohol program at a rate of fifty-eight dollars per employee. Funds are appropriated in budget code A four zero one zero dash four nine one zero in the FY twenty twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve payment number four in the amount of twenty-three thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to Tam Enterprises, Inc., for the relocation of the Maple Avenue Booster Station project as per recommendation of village engineer Barton and La Judas. Funds are appropriated in budget code H eight three two zero point two zero zero zero.
Second?
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Number four, motion to approve payment number thirteen in the amount of ninety-three thousand, six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and sixty-five cents to Tam Enterprises, Inc., for the well number three treatment plant project as per the recommendation of Pitt and Garrow and Doach Consulting Engineers PC. Funds are appropriated in budget code H point eight three three zero point two zero zero zero.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to approve payment number three in the amount of nineteen thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars and fifty cents to Joseph Warren Electrical for the well number three treatment plant project as per the recommendation of Pitt and Garrow and Doach Consulting Engineers PC. Funds are appropriated in budget code H point eight three three zero point two zero zero zero.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to hire Justin Holman to the position of Village of Warwick Engineering Intern at thirty-two point five hours per week for approximately five weeks with a start date of December fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. The rate of pay to be in accordance with the FY twenty-five, twenty-six budget.
Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion to grant permission to the Warwick Lions Club to ring bells for the Salvation Army at the business locations of thirty-three to thirty-seven Main Street on December sixth, seventh, and fourteenth, twenty twenty-five between the hours of ten AM and four PM. Proof of proper insurance has been received.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to acknowledge receipt of the standardized notice form from the New York State Liquor Authority for an on-premise liquor license for MM AK Concepts LLC located at thirteen Forrester Avenue, Warwick, New York, one oh nine nine zero, and authorize the village clerk to submit a letter notifying the New York State Liquor Authority that there are no objections to this notification and application.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion to authorize the mayor to enter into an agreement for repayment of water and sewer charges for the property owner at forty-three North Lynn Street, Warwick, New York, in the amount of three thousand, two hundred and seven dollars and forty-nine cents to be paid in sixteen quarterly installments of two hundred dollars and forty-seven cents, and authorize the mayor to say the same, sign the same.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to acknowledge that Michael Vrenieri, auditor of the Village of Warwick, performed an internal audit of the Village of Warwick's Justice Court as of May thirty-first, twenty twenty-five to comply with Section two zero one nine dash A of the Uniform Justice Court Act and has found that all reporting and record keeping is being completed in a timely manner, and the reports are in compliance with the New York State requirements.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And Tom?
Motion to acknowledge receipt of the application from Warwick LLC for a special use permit to convert an existing third-floor office space to a two-bedroom, one-bathroom apartment at eight Forrester Avenue, section, block, and lot two oh seven dash three dash three, to set an escrow for processing of the application at two thousand dollars, and to refer the application to the village attorney and the village's engineering consultant for review and comment.
Okay.
Second.
So we have some questions about, uh, whether, um, this actually needs to be a special use permit or a, um, conditional use. And you had a conversation with, uh, the planning board attorney.
Right.
And...
So she's of the opinion that because the special use permit was granted in twenty twenty-four for the first floor and second floor of the building, that the apartments on the third floor would be technically a modification of that existing special use permit, which is why the planning board is referring it to the Village Board of Trustees. I view it that it's a different application because it's not modifying the apartments that were made to the first and second floor. It's for a wholly new third floor. And in the code, that's a conditional use for residences on the second and third floor of an existing building, and a conditional use is subject to the review by the planning board. So, um, I don't know, did you, um, the email where it kind of outlined to you something? What might have thought of, one might be faster, um, or one might be a little slower but save the applicant some money. So, that, I think, is for the board to decide, and we can go forward with a building department interpretation for their view of whether this is a new application or amending the existing one. Or we can move forward with the special use permit review, have this be done in January, and, you know, but then subjecting the applicant to escrow and, you know, the village board review and everything.
So it has a number of hoops. It has the architectural review board.
Right.
And also, it has, if we do this process and it goes back, then, then we do a SECR review.
Yeah.
And then simultaneously, the planning board must go through that review process, hopefully at the same time.
And it would be minimal because it's a type-two action, so really it would just be reviewing the E A F that's submitted.
Okay.
There wouldn't have to be any formal review under SECR because it's a type-two. So that makes it, you know, more minimal.
Is the reason that they're saying it's an amendment to an initial special use because they're going back to the original use of the property, like in the original changes, versus what we are saying is it's a residential, like we're, or what you're saying is that they're just converting the third floor to residential, which is, you know, that's a conditional, an allowable conditional use?
I think her thought was because there's already been a special use permit granted for this applicant for this specific property, that technically it would be amending the, the grant that's already been given because it's in the same building.
But, well, I, 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 I don't know. I, I think that, um, there were, the special use permit that was granted initially was for, uh, changing office building into residential apartments and two floors, but one, one of those floors actually had to be built.
Right.
So it was really a, a significant change in the site plan even. So that would seem to trigger a special use permit. In this case, it's a pre-existing building, um, and it's a third floor. So why would we all of a sudden open up the special use permit option for that? I, I mean, I'm, I'm kind of thinking, thinking your way. Still, go ahead, no.
How many apartments were included in the original special use permit? It would have exceeded two, which is probably why we had to do the special use permit.
Right.
Because it was more than two.
That's correct. I think it's four.
So, we're, we are basically extending the special use permit to allow five instead of four. So, I'm, in speaking with the planning board attorney, how did she react to your position?
We didn't discuss bedrooms.
Yeah, but as, as far as conditional use versus...
Her position is that it's a special use.
And she stuck by that.
Yeah.
And there's no proposed changes to the exterior of the building?
There is. It has to go to the A R B.
Okay, so regardless, right?
I think I...
Yeah, there, there's a proposal for a, um, tra, a deck, a rooftop deck that is connected with the, this apartment, and also a stair.
Enclosed?
Enclosed stair.
Yeah.
Add it to the outside of the building? Oh, okay. All right, that wasn't clear.
But we're just acknowledging receipt today.
Yeah, but we'd, I think we'd like to give a path forward.
Okay.
Yeah. Tom, what's your take?
I'm, I'm trying to recall, what are the conditions that a special use permit becomes required? So at what point does something need a special use permit versus a conditional?
In the code.
Initial use, you have the, you have the bulk table, and it lists conditional use. But for special use permits, if I recall, there's, um...
But it's, it's also in the bulk table. It's also in the use table. It's in, it's, it's in the use table as to which ones are S and which ones are P.
The section I wrote down?
Well, okay, one forty-five, twenty-three, two.
What is it? One, one forty-five, twenty?
One forty-five dash twenty-three point two.
Twenty-two.
And then under that subsection B, and then two.
Okay, a conditional use is residence on the second and third floor of existing building. So it is owned commercially. That application for all intents and purposes is already kind of complete, right? They already got the special use permit for that. That's kind of history at this point. This is a, potentially a new application, looking for, to convert a residence.
Or a, no, a, a office.
Or to convert an office to a residence on the third floor of an existing building.
I agree.
It does seem like a conditional use.
So it's clo, so it sounds like the planning board attorney feels like it's open for the life. That permit is effectively like not ever closed. You don't begin again for the life of the project. And like, your perspective is it's done, it's closed, yeah.
Mainly because this is work to the third floor, which was not a part of the original special use permit. If it was to add or anything amend the first and second floor, then I would agree.
Yeah.
So E A F then, or it's, that would require the E A F review at the planning board. Is that correct?
Right. The village board wouldn't be, you know, reviewing because it would be a conditional use, which is subject to review by the...
Was this officially referred by the planning board to go to the village board?
It was in what you had sent us, yeah, where, uh, the planning board attorney referred it to the...
But it wasn't referred by the board. It was referred...
There's all the comments on the website.
Oh, thank you, yeah.
I'll have to look at the minutes.
Yeah.
Because that's, that's her memo.
Yes.
That was the last meeting?
Yes.
October fourteenth?
Uh, go to the second page, the way it is. Are you under the minutes or...?
Planning board minutes, yeah.
So go to the agenda.
Oh, okay.
And then you'll be able to click on the links in the agenda.
Oh, yeah, okay.
As for the second application.
So it is in the minutes of the planning board?
It's in the agenda.
The, the, yeah, the, the reports are in the agenda, the agenda for that particular meeting of the planning board.
Is it Colo, Colo, sorry, sorry. Colonial one?
No, Forrester.
It's not in here.
But yes, it's not in here.
It's right here, number two, application number two.
Not for the October fourteenth meeting, the November twelfth.
Oh, November twelfth, okay.
So I don't know if she can assure the minutes. No, she didn't control that.
Eight, okay, thank you. So, they, uh, no. That's for twenty twenty-three.
Just go down and go to the... And say everything right here.
Oh, thank you. Attorney, number seven, okay. Uh-huh. Multiple residence. The recommendation is to amend an existing special use permit, but isn't the permit closed once it's done?
That's my view. Is that, yeah, because this, the...
It's all constructed. They have their certificate of occupancy. They're in there. They're doing stuff. It should be over.
Okay. Um, I just want to go back to what you mentioned, Barry, about now there are five apartments. And how does that change?
Right, yeah. I have to see what the code says about the number. Six apartments. Oops.
Oh, wait, so the special use permit was to grant six apartments, but they built how many?
No, it must have been six. I, I'm sorry.
Whatever the number was, that's what they built.
It wasn't they built, okay.
They're asking for, regardless of how many we built, they're asking for one.
Oh, I didn't know if they asked for six and we built five at a time.
No, no.
To me, to me, it seems like it would be a conditional use permit, which means, this, this seems terribly inefficient, but it would have to go back to the planning board to do that, the E A F review. Is that right?
And the whole review.
The whole...
To grant the conditional use, to review the site plan.
Okay.
So that would take more time but save the applicant funding money?
Well, the village, uh, planning board attorney suggests that we get an interpretation from the building department in terms of, you know, what review that this falls under. And I think that would potentially delay the process a bit just to await a response for interpretation.
That could be months.
But, 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 but if we, if we go the route of the special use permit, that would require public hearing and a full process that would drag out for months.
Well, you could set the public hearing. You could potentially approve it that night, depending on public input. I don't know.
You gotta advertise, you gotta go out and advertise, you gotta...
But that's for special use permit, right?
Right, but all they're doing is converting third-floor offices to residential.
And they're adding, they're adding a unit to the previously approved four or six units that they were given a special use permit for, in, within the same building.
So...
And they were also led to put them on the first floor.
The conditional use process, is it the same as the special use permit process? Do they both require public hearing?
Special use is here.
Conditional is there, yeah.
Conditional's there. Public hearing either way. I mean, if we were, I, I would think that if we, we were, if we were going special use route, then we'd be working with the planning board all along and everything would be kind of done jointly, and we'd, um, you know, adopt whatever we needed to, each of us needed to adopt. And when it came down to the final vote, we'd be voting relative to that additional unit, and then they'd be saying, site plan approval, here you go.
That was exactly the attitude of the planning board attorney.
So, so could I withdraw this motion then? Because if it's, if it goes back to the planning board, this is not, this is not for the village board agenda.
Right.
And it sounds like neither approach is actually wrong. Like, it, it sounds like it's...
Yeah, I don't know what, which one trumps, does one trump the other, I guess would be my question. Which, which would hold precedence?
Yeah, that's a good question. I don't know if it's necessarily one trump, so it's just how are you interpreting the work that's being done and whether this is a new project, amending an existing project. So I think it's more, how are we, you know, interpreting?
How do we view it?
Right.
Which is more restrictive?
I don't know.
Probably the, uh, special use permit because it brings another board into the mix.
And, I mean, this is in alignment with the conditional use, and it's in alignment with the comprehensive plan. Why would we require a special use? Well, if there's any additional changes to the exterior of the building, I would consider it...
I, I think, I think Liz's comment may be around that we've already done a special use, so she's saying just amend it instead of doing a new special use permit. Which that, that I don't necessarily follow because I think it's, it, the project's been proposed and done and complete. I didn't, I didn't get, I didn't get the sense in any of this that it was a request for a new special use permit. I, just reading the comment, I, I got the sense it was for amending an additional one because it was already in place.
Yeah.
But don't you have to go through all the same, if you're amending it, don't you have to go through the whole process again?
Have to look at what the code states on that.
Yeah, I, just a quick look. It doesn't seem like there's a route that's different than going through it all again.
Yeah, because they're changing the facts of the project, and you're changing how it's been presented to the public. And so you would, if you're amending it, you would have to go through that all again.
Are we obligated to, to get, um, to reference this to the building department?
I have to check on that. That's what Liz Cassidy suggested would be the move if we wanted to go this route, but...
But then that, again, would then create a time element.
Right.
Which seems unfair as well.
So I'm not fully sure of the procedure of what the planning board attorney believes and what...
And would that be the building inspector's interpretation?
Well, I guess it would be the village inspector interpreting the code of the conditional use of the second, the third.
Deferring.
Like, instead of doing the attorney, having the attorneys make the decision, it's deferring the legal opinion to the building department?
Well, for an interpretation of the code, I mean, again, I would check that procedure, but, um, when there's the disagreement there of the interpretation of the code, which I think this is what it is, that's where the code enforcement officer or building inspector interprets the code and issues a determination.
If we went the route of the conditional use, could we be challenged for, and, and I don't necessarily think legally challenged, but whatever, challenged relative to not having done the, um, special use because it exceeds the original special use that was given for the property versus, you following?
You're saying because the special use permit was already granted, if we don't, if we leave that as it is?
If, if, if we, if we did the conditional, if, if it went the way of the conditional, and then could we be challenged on not having done a special use permit when the special use permit for the property only allows four or six apartments?
But does it only allow six apartments on those specific floors? And so there's apartments on the third floor?
What, what, what the village reviewed was, um, where they were in the back part of the building, the, I guess, in addition to it, and, and, and a, uh, adding a second floor, that was specific to what the village in the special... that was specific to what the village in the special use permit allowed to happen. So if, if we only go the conditional route use with the planning board, could the, uh, action be challenged because we failed to do what we needed to do relative to the special use permit?
That's where I think, well, one, if you want to go the route of interpretation, that would, you know, give you an answer of what the, the, the body or the officer that enforces the code, what their view is, but, I also think you could make the argument that in the initial special use permit, there was more of a special use permit that was warranted because of other different conditions compared to the conditions currently of converting an office to residence on a existing building and on a third floor, which is clearly stated as a conditional use, so I think because it's pretty different scenarios of the work that was done for the twenty twenty-four versus the work that's being applied for now. They're pretty different. But, I mean, i- if you want to be consistent with granting a special use permit before and if that fear is, you know, a big concern, you can do the special use permit route, um, I just wanted to point it out that it just seems like there's a bit of a discrepancy.
No, clearly.
And I wanted the board to be aware of it and, you know, think about it.
I mean, my concern about it being referred to the building department for an opinion or an interpretation, that interpretation can go both ways, and so we could end up back here.
Exactly.
You know.
With more time passed.
With more time passed, so that's a drag.
And the other thing that, um, Liz and I were discussing is because this application seems pretty straightforward, doesn't seem too controversial, it doesn't, I don't think that the fees that would be incurred would really be extraordinary if you want the special use permit route, so.
But there's a higher risk though, right?
Of?
Of the piece of incurring, we don't think that it would be, but there is a risk and they've already received. They're not, they're not making a, a really large change to the, the project here, they're just converting the third floor to residential.
Is there a limit as to the amount of apartments that someone can have within a structure?
I was trying to find that and I'm not, I'm not having a lot of luck.
Because this one fits us at what, seven?
Right, there would be seven at the, with this addition.
That would either be outlined in the code or like subject to building code, fire, safety.
Wait, I'm sorry, is that central business or general commercial?
Central business.
Will you tell us when you find it, like where it is?
Yeah, uh, page seven. So I'm looking at permitted uses. Conditional uses, the special uses doesn't seem like. Stupid question, sorry, special uses aligned to special use permit?
Yes.
Okay, so if it's central business, special uses for wireless telecommunication facilities, educational facilities, cemeteries, volunteer ambulance service facilities, hospital, nursing home and fire stations. What am I missing?
Multiple dwellings.
It's not even on there.
But it's in the table. On page ninety.
Maybe on the table.
Well, that, that's because it can, in the central business district, conditional uses are residences on second and third floor of existing building. That's why it's not in the special uses.
Yeah, I, to, to me, it just seems clear that this is, is a conditional use permit.
Yeah.
Multiple, multiple residences call for special use in every district. So where, wherever they're allowed, it's a special use.
And so they, they've already received a special use for, to allow that.
So they have that.
So they have it.
I think that what Barry was saying is the number was specified in the special use and that's why it's, but where is the num? Where's the, where's the number table? For multi?
You mean relative to what you're allowed?
Yeah.
Is there something in the bulk table?
Is there something that would be comparable?
I keep scrolling past.
On, on, Spring Street, Anna's.
Yeah, one twenty, okay.
They're internally, they're locked. They're getting rid of that, which has been part of their business and that's going to become.
Currently, page one seventy-two?
And that just went through a conditional.
Okay.
This is, uh, two, one bedroom, one, two bedroom. We didn't say that it was for six. He wrote it here. Is that, is that?
It currently contains the case of two offices and six.
But that doesn't.
One, where, one seventy-two?
That's what the section where it starts.
I know, there's too many sentences.
Then it lists special use and conditional use.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Isabel, if we went the route of, uh, special use, then the planning board would just take whatever we said and basically apply it to the plan and that's what would be allowed. So they wouldn't have to go through the conditional use process.
Right, they would just be reviewing the site plan.
Yep. And I think we'd want to have that done concurrently so that we knew and saw what it was we were approving.
Yeah.
Well, and also the AHRB?
Right, yeah.
So just in the timeline of meetings, right, just see for that, so just the timeline, right, I think it has to be referred, it would have to first be referred, right, to your office and to the engineer for comment, is what we usually do. And then wait for those reports to come back and then we refer it to the AHDRB, right, with those comments and then we send everything, including the public hearing notice, to Orange County Planning. If I'm correct, with, we did that with his initial application, with all the mailings and everything else. Um, and I think Orange County Planning has thirty days to get back to us on that, so it's already November seventeenth, so probably looking like January.
But, but that wouldn't change whichever route we took, that, that timeline.
I was just putting it out there.
Yeah, yeah, no, I, no, yeah.
All those steps I believe.
But whichever way we went, I don't know the timeline's gonna change.
Um, well, if, if you're doing a conditional use, you don't have to, do you have to do the same, um, outreach, mailings?
I'm not familiar with this.
If there's a public hearing, you have to do mail.
Yeah, I'd have to.
It's the upstairs ghost.
I'd have to see what it was, if a conditional use requires a public hearing.
Would it then become ace, a, um, multiple residence? It already is, right, the special use permit said that it was a mul- multi-residence, that's why it became special use. I feel like we need to look and see whether the special use permit, like, was restrictive around the number of units, like if there's anything around that.
The one that was originally granted?
Yeah.
It specified, um, six bedrooms total.
And that's what you're saying?
So Barry, your thought is if we're adding one bedroom, let's say, that technically would be amending the special use permit that's already been granted?
Right. And I don't know whether there's provision to amend the special use permit or you just do a new special use permit that presents the new conditions.
Typically, you could amend one, but I'd have to check what the village's code says.
Yeah, a new one wouldn't, it seems like a new one wouldn't really apply because you already have a special use permit for multiple residents. And the conditions for getting a special use permit are the use of the multiple residents.
But would we treat it differently if they had, they were allowed six bedrooms originally and they came and wanted twelve?
But they want seven.
Definitely, I think.
Well, that would definitely open up Pandora's box and of course that would include parking issues and the whole.
Conditional use does require a public hearing for the planning board.
But that, but then that's only one public hearing as opposed to two.
Well, no, we could do them together, we could do it together, right, we could do a joint public hearing.
Yeah, you'd just have to schedule, you have to coordinate when each board scheduled them, so that might delay the process a bit, depending on.
We could have a, we could do a special, I mean, we've done that in the past, right, where, where it was on a night that wasn't either board's meeting or, no, I guess we did it on one of our meeting nights with the planning board.
Is this turning it into apartments? Like are they?
They're still, uh, uh.
Still mixed, mixed, yeah.
It's mixed use.
Yeah.
I, okay, I, I still think it's conditional.
Yeah, I'm.
I still.
Maybe I'm missing something, I think so too, because it said unconditional, second or third story apartment, it just, to me, it just seems cut and dry, but.
I think the issue, I mean, I do think that Barry has a point, that it had six units in the special use permit and now it's seven. And so, but I, but I still think it's, that's closed, now we're doing conditional. Yeah.
Uh, six bed, six bedrooms, right?
Correct.
Oh.
Yeah, just, just so the public doesn't get that wrong.
Oh, that, sorry, I don't know, I don't have.
I know, we were talking both.
The permit in front of me.
Or six apartments.
Six apartments.
Six one-bedroom apartments.
I think one is two bedroom.
Hey, right.
And this additional one is two bedroom.
So it's six apartments that exist in the building.
Six apartments?
And two offices.
I was just parroting, quoting. Yeah, I still think I'm, I still think the, the same thing.
I wish there was stronger language in the code that defined, you know, exactly what the issue is, so we weren't kind of second guessing ourselves.
If you go with a special use permit, I don't think that's going to be an issue, it's just, it involves the village board where maybe under the code in this situation, the village board might not need to be involved. But I don't think it would be a harm if the board did, based off of your argument, you know, that technically it could be amending because we're adding apartments to an already verified, approved number of apartments to the same building.
But it, there's nothing in the code that speaks of amending. And that's the problem, because amending is interpreted now as starting all over as a complete.
Right, it's starting all over.
It would require a, you know, a, a, a new, um, special use permit.
I mean, to me, that, that's not amending, that's like revisiting completely from the ground up, so.
What, what is the difference between special, I'm sorry, I can't, what's the difference between special use permit and conditional, just which board?
I think.
Well, but the special use, I think, isn't the special use permit, give, give us greater latitude to decide yes or no and we don't really have to explain ourselves?
Well, it just gives you latitude, period.
Okay, whereas conditional, you've got a set of conditions that are associated with each of the uses that the planning board needs to then require compliance. So planning board, in, as it's most normally is, the planning board doesn't have a lot of latitude to force changes. When it comes as a special use, we basically have, I won't say total latitude, but pretty heavy latitude to, uh, you know, make a decision. I mean, we can't be arbitrary and capricious probably, but, uh, you know, make a decision that we think's in the best interest of the village.
This is a mixed use or multiple residence, would we classify?
Mixed.
Mixed.
Cause a, a multiple residence does not allow for more than six units per building? Are there any restrictions on a mixed use? I haven't been able to find that.
No more than six, uh, units, you said?
In the multiple residences, but I'm trying to find if there's a restriction on mixed, mixed use because if it is, then that would move into special use, wouldn't it?
Yes, I believe so.
So where's, where do you see the restriction of six?
For multiple residences, page two oh four, one forty-five dash one twenty-seven. That's what I was, I was trying to find. I'll go back to the bulk use table, cause it reference, it cross-references the mixed uses. One forty-five dash.
So two oh four was conditional uses? Was the, under conditional uses, right? The two oh, the, uh, the multiple residence on two oh four? Oh, no, are subject to special use.
Multiple residence in a central business district is special. And so that's how I think they got it, cause it's interesting, cause under mixed use, it says residences on second and third floor of existing building, but they have residences on the first floor too, right?
Yes.
Which is, I guess, why it went to special.
And, and your comment about no more than six dwelling units is only if there are multiple buildings proposed for a lot, that each of the buildings can't have more than six. So that wouldn't necessarily apply here, because it's a single building, so it can have more than six, that restriction.
Oh, that's not how I read that.
Um, so.
Here we are again.
So the question is, do they allow, um, permit parking?
They have nice big lot over there.
Yeah, can they take some life of our winter needs?
While I can see both points of view, it seems to me that the cleanest way to go with it and the one that can least be challenged would be to go with the special use permit.
I, I understand that, though I am frustrated because I feel like it, at the end of the day, it, it, the applicant has to, you know, pay more for that process and the process seems a little onerous and that's, that's what I'm struggling with.
Okay, so like forensics here on how this happened, it, it was a central bus- business district, commercial structure. They wanted to convert it into mixed use, which if they had just done residences on the second and third floor, it would have been conditional. But the reason it had to be a special use was because they wanted also the residences to be on the first floor. So to, so it seems like the actual special use piece is the residences on the first floor, not the residences on the third floor.
Now, according to the bulk table, um, as, any multiple residence in that zone, in any of the zones requires a special use permit.
Right, but they're, they're using multiple residences as a residential use, mixed use is residences on the second and third floor. But a multiple residence building is not a mixed use building.
It could be.
I mean, it ma- it makes, it's, but the definite, we should look at the definition. I think the def, yeah.
I understand what you're saying.
Wish I could control F on this.
I left my laptop in my car. I left my laptop in my car. No, I just.
Yeah, so we have a letter from the engineer. Uh, mentioned is a point five-seven acre parcel located central business districts. And within the historic district, it's located outside of the flood zone. Oh, yeah. The proposed mixed use of a residence on the third floor of existing building is a conditional permitted use within the CB district. The existing use of a professional office fall under use group J, whereas a proposed use of residence will fall under use group J. So it seems the engineer also tends to agree conditional.
And I, then, so then I wonder, I mean, uh, to, since the engineer is giving his interpretation, why would we need but another interpretation through the building department?
And that's the planning board's consultant.
Multiple residences, I think, are the pure definition, I think, is it's all residential. Cause it says principal residential buildings. If there are multiple buildings, they're residential buildings.
You know what page the bulk table is?
Ninety-five.
Thank you.
I haven't.
I could have scrolled for days.
Memorized.
That's what pages have.
It doesn't provide like a, a pure definition, but it's page two oh four talks about the
Right.
two, the multiple residences. So I think that multiple residences is specific to just residential.
But I think if you go to the use table, multiple residences.
Is under residential.
It's under residential, but it also, let me see. Not gonna rely on my memory.
Oh, sorry, it's actually none, ninety, ninety, the use requirements. The bulk table is the ninety-five.
Oh, okay, yep, thank you.
And, and this is in?
Ninety.
CB, what's on? It's in CB, so, I mean, it's on the, on the bulk table, in CB, multiple residences are a special use.
Right, but I think it's not a multiple residence.
Cause it's mixed use.
Mixed use, but they had a special use because they put the residence on the first floor. That's
Twenty twenty-four.
That's what I, seems like.
Is mixed use or multiple residence?
The meeting minutes are gonna be fun for this, because we have all these parallel conversations.
Turn it over to AI.
Yeah, thank you. So in the twenty twenty. In the twenty twenty-four special use permit for the first and second floor, it's categorized as proposed apartment buildings constituting a multiple residence.
Okay, so it called it a multiple residence.
But we're calling it a mixed use.
Well, well.
Because it is, truly is.
But, but this moves us into this separate.
It's a void.
Yeah, because it's already now a multiple residence. And what we're trying to do is get a residence on the third floor of an existing building, which is a conditional use in the CB. So it's still, I still think it's a conditional use.
I agree.
The only problem is the multiple residence requirement is you can have no more, okay, so actually I undo what I just said, because the multiple residence requirement says you can have no more than six dwelling units.
In a s.
In a single building.
Multiple buildings. That's, that's.
In a single building.
In a single building where there are multiple buildings.
So someplace like Park Lane or.
Yeah. It's only have six.
Right.
Yeah. Trying to think of other examples.
Oh, man.
Yeah, it's page, I think it's page two oh four. It's one forty-five dash.
Two oh four.
One twenty-seven.
No more than six dwelling units per principal residence.
You gotta go up to the beginning of that.
If there are, wait, which one?
E.
Yes.
So E says if there are multiple buildings, there are not multiple buildings, so none of that applies. That, that only applies if there are multiple buildings.
Okay, I'm back to conditional use then.
Well.
I'm back.
We can go around and round. Um, uh, I think we, so we have a, a motion, we have a second. If we, so this motion is to have a special use permit. To move forward with the special use, use, use permit trajectory. So we can put that up for a vote and then if it doesn't go, then we can modify it for a, um, conditional use.
Wouldn't we make the?
What?
So if, I, I, I think the intent is if we say no, then it automatically becomes a conditional use, or do we have to actually refer it back to the planning board as a conditional use? Should there be a motion to do that?
I think you'd have to refer it back. I'm not totally sure, but I think you'd have to refer it back to the planning board. I don't know if by default saying no.
Right.
Makes it a conditional.
Right, yeah, because the message could be interpreted differently. That we, we don't want to allow it. So you, we could withdraw the motion. Right? And then, and then make a motion to refer this back to the planning board to be, um, adjudicated as a conditional use.
But then that'll add.
Or we just withdraw.
Right.
I'm sorry.
I don't know, I don't know.
What did you say?
That'll delay the process?
You could withdraw. I and maybe Mayor Newhart could have a conversation with Liz Cassidy and try to just come to a, you know, resolution there. Because if we withdraw the motion, there's no, you know.
Right.
The board's not acting on it right now. Um, you don't have to act on it yet, so it might become moot if we just withdraw it. Even though they referred it to the village board, well then I don't know if it, if they refer it to the village board, you might have to acknowledge it.
Well, that's what this is, to acknowledge receipt.
Right.
So.
Of the application.
Yeah, but also to set an escrow to process it, so this is, this is acknowledging it and taking action on it.
Right.
So maybe we can acknowledge receipt and then refer it back.
I, I don't think we wanna acknowledge receipt, cause that starts a process, correct?
Yeah, and you're also acknowledging it, you're acknowledging an application for a special use permit and the application for a special use permit might not, not actually be applicable.
Right. So then I think what I heard you say is that we should withdraw some, whoever made the motion should withdraw.
I, I will withdraw that motion.
Thanks, Tom.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
All right.
And so what's the next step?
I think speaking to Liz Cassidy.
To Liz Cassidy.
Again.
Okay.
And pointing out the planning board engineer's report, calling it a conditional use.
Right.
Saying, you know, this is your.
Well, and, and that, that our board really looked at this, uh, from every angle, you know, and, uh, and so there's a gray area. Um, and, you know, just like.
Theme of the night.
Theme of the night.
Living in this gray area tonight.
Shall I continue with the?
Yes, please.
All right. A motion to acknowledge receipt of the application from Dennis Rutherford for a special use permit for the removal of an existing three-bedroom, single-family dwelling and construction of a two-story multifamily dwelling at thirty Brady Road, section block and lot two eighteen dash one dash four to set an escrow for processing of the application at two thousand dollars and to refer the application to the village attorney and village's engineering consultant for review and comment.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Any questions? We have our architect sitting at the table.
Any comments?
Any comments?
And this is, um, special use permit and not a zoning request, because, um, it's multi.
It's more than two family.
More than two family.
Multiple residence.
It just had that bulk table up.
Ninety.
Ninety, yeah. Ninety and ninety-five.
I'm all over the place.
This is zoned residential right now?
Mm-hmm.
I see, yeah, so multiple residence in residential. It's clear, special use permit.
Hallelujah, it's clear. Hallelujah, it's clear.
Yeah, no. Says S with a.
Chosen.
S with a star, so. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, concerns? We have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And, uh, we have a.
An addendum.
Addendum.
Yeah, and that's you.
Okay. Uh, resolution, the village of Warwick Board of Trustees, preparation of a community assessment and climate adaptation plan. Whereas the village was awarded a grant to complete actions within the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Climate Smart Communities Program and has received Barton LeJudas' BNL's proposal for its consulting services in the preparation of a community climate assessment and climate adaptation plan in response to the grant. This assessment and adaptation plan will provide key insight and actual strategies regarding the village's resilience and adaptation to a changing climate. Accordingly, the board intends to accept BNL's proposal for its consulting services. Therefore, it is resolved that the village board of trustees accept BNL's proposal with the accompanying terms and conditions in rider for the preparation of a community climate assessment and climate, climate adaptation plan in the amount of forty-five thousand dollars utilizing village funds from A dash one four four zero dash four zero zero zero.
Second.
The only thing I would maybe clarify would be that the grant amount, which was twenty-five thousand. Would that make sense to clarify that in the?
You can.
In the resolution?
That's the grant amount from the state.
From, from the state, you know, from Nicerta? Shoot. I should specify that, right? Does anyone else think that this needs to be clarified a tad? Cause it says forty-five thousand, we're getting twenty-five thousand from the grant.
Well, we've said that the, we were awarded the grant, so, um.
But you didn't mention.
I think for the sake of the minutes and, I don't know.
In the resolution.
It's included in the attachments, the amount associated.
Yeah.
So do we have to accept the grant?
Oh, the DEC.
Or from Nicerta? Has the board not?
I don't know. We, have we accepted the grant?
I think we did.
I don't know.
I think we are at the point where we have due to, um, at least the due diligence, because that's how this was revisited. We received notification from one of those organizations from the DEC, I think.
Yeah, I think so. Okay, where would I put this? Um.
Why don't you do down the first line?
On the first line, whereas the village was awarded a grant to complete actions within the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation Climate Smart Communities Program in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. And has received BNL's proposal for its consulting services in the preparation of a community climate assessment climate adaptation plan in response to the grant.
Is, is the grant up to twenty-five thousand dollars or is it a flat twenty-five thou?
Twenty-five thousand.
But we have to spend a certain amount.
We do.
Okay.
It's a fifty percent, isn't it? Fifty percent match, so.
That's correct, but some of it's in kind.
Yeah, they're, they're doing forty-five thousand because five thousand would be in kind match for the village.
Excuse me.
But what if they don't spend all forty-five? Not that that would ever happen.
Yeah.
I think we'll be coming back for an amendment.
I guess the question is, do we need to accept it?
Well, I think we have to fill out all these X apps.
Okay.
That's where it was held up, they said.
Okay.
You weren't sure if you were gonna.
Yep. And they need this in order to, to go to contract with us, okay. So I, do I have to read the whole thing over again? I amended it.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so do we have a second?
Ready for the roll?
Oh.
A second to the amendment?
Second with the amendment.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, and a roll call.
Uh, trustee King?
Yes.
Trustee Foster?
Yes.
Trustee McKnight?
Yes.
Trustee Cora?
Yes.
Mayor Newhart?
Maybe. No, I mean, yes.
Gray.
Sorry.
What was in that chalice?
In my chalice.
Chalice.
Okay, well, that was exhausting.
I know, never be fooled by the length of the agenda.
Really, absolutely. Um, I'm worried two reports. Barry, do you have anything for us?
Uh, just quickly, uh, um, we're still under voluntary water conservation, so we're asking our customers to conserve water by eliminating outside use, um, for plants and lawns and washing vehicles. Um, and inside, you know, do your best to conserve water, uh, by consolidating loads of dishes and clothes. And if you want any more information, you can go to the village website, uh, under how to conserve water. New York State DOT paving project is pretty much winding down. Um, we're gonna see less and less activity and it's gonna be very quiet for the winter, according to discussions I've had with the, the contractor. And then, uh, this week, uh, we're gonna be doing some waterline work on Grand Street. Putting an insertion valve in. It's associated with the new booster pump station that's being installed there, so there'll probably be some lane closures and flaggers and, uh, as that activity takes place. Uh, I think they were doing some staging possibly today and I'm not sure when, which day this week. It's either Tuesday or Wednesday, I believe, that they're gonna actually install the insertion valve to allow then to be able to shut off the water so that, uh, they can proceed with connecting the piping for the new, um, pump station.
Very good.
And they are gonna pay, they are gonna put in that, um, crosswalk where they said, cause when they repaved, Galloway, they paved over the crosswalk and didn't replace it, but
That's right.
Um, Barry reached out to the state and originally they were gonna move the crosswalk, but it sounds like they're gonna put it right back where it was.
Where it was, okay.
Which is great. Very, very important.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for following up on that, Barry.
Certainly you initiated it, so thank you for that.
Barry, when does, when does the work pick back up on ninety-four?
Spring sometime. Um, it's gonna be a matter of, you know, what activities they're gonna be focused on. Probably none of the paving will get done until later on in the summer towards fall. But, you know, they've got some big projects to complete. They've got the Colonial Avenue intersection.
And a culvert on.
Maybe the culvert on Galloway. Um, there's another culvert that's gonna need to be replaced, uh, out by Homestead Village, right? On ninety-four, the stream that comes down from the, um, county park.
Right.
So.
And the roundabout.
And, yeah.
Are, are they doing a sidewalk on Galloway to connect to the school?
Uh, just to. Just to South Street. We wish to the school.
We tried.
We tried.
Right.
Yeah.
Another, live to fight another day.
Yeah. You just have to start walking that route to make a very deep path.
Put some stones there.
Yeah, put some stones. Slowly but surely we'll get there.
Well, if I recall, this, the, the state's schedule for replacing the traffic lights is three hundred some years, so. Maybe then we'll get a sidewalk.
But we are getting crosswalk at Larry's, which is.
Which is great.
Which will be great.
Really good.
And, and the entire loop of sidewalk, you know, South Street, which we have completely redone.
Yeah.
And then the new sidewalk from South Street up to Oakland and beyond, so it's, 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 that'll be significant into itself.
Well, thanks everyone for. Well, thanks everyone for all the, all the work on that.
Um, so the Warwick Merchants Collective presents Shop Local and Give Back to support our local food pantry November twenty third to December thirteenth. Uh, you can purchase a canvas bag. When you do that, you're doing more than shopping, all proceeds are gonna be donated to the Warwick Ecumenical Food Pantry. Every twenty dollar canvas bag is stuffed with coupons for free gifts and give backs from participating Warwick businesses. So you can do that downtown from November twenty third to December thirteenth. Also, Warwick Home for the Holidays, there are gonna be ongoing events throughout the season. Free horse and buggy rides and weather permitting, and they're still working on the dates for that. But there'll be a Shop Local fundraising event, uh, which we just talked about, Small Business Saturday on Saturday, November twenty ninth. Santa's gonna be on Railroad Green, November twenty third and twenty eighth, December seventh, fourteenth, twentieth, twenty first from twelve PM to three PM. You're gonna see caroling, sights and sounds of the season. Uh, Warwick Tree Lighting is gonna be November twenty eighth, six PM at Lewis Park. And Winding through Warwick will be December sixth, ten AM to four PM. The menorah lighting will be December fourteenth, five PM in Lewis Park. And Apple Eve, of course, will be December thirty first at eleven thirty PM, Railroad Green. Hopefully it won't be below zero. And the Patriots, the Patriots.
The caroling for the nativity.
Oh, um, I don't know if I know off the top of my head, let me look at my calendar, maybe it'll.
Well, Mary's looking that up, um, the Patriots Path Subcommittee is gonna be kicking off. So that design process is underway and I think we're really excited about that.
December seventh, I'm about to say, okay.
Okay, so do you wanna add to that, Mary?
Yes, so caroling at the nativity in Lewis Park will be happening on Sunday, December seventh from six.
Five.
Five, five to six PM. And also the Warwick Valley Gardeners will be hosting the lighting of Railroad Green on Saturday, November twenty second at six PM. And then I have two historical society events I wanted to announce, I have them in my phone. Sunday, November twenty third from two PM to four PM. Um, the Warwick Historical Society will be celebrating the release of their community cookbook, which is called Gather Round: Historic and Homemade Recipes from Warwick, New York. You can go on the website to RSVP, your ticket price includes the purchase of the book. And in December, the Warwick Historical Society will be hosting their second annual cookie exchange. It's twenty five dollars per person and this is on December seventh from two to four PM at the Buckby Center. Again, you can go on the Historical Society's website, warwickhistory.org to register for that event.
Sounds good.
Yeah, okay.
Sir?
Uh, just real quick, I spoke with our project manager for the solar project that we have a grant for at Nicerda this morning. So Isabel, thank you, gave us the red lines back we need to give to the, to the vendor to review. Once that's done before we sign, Nicerda would like to take a look at it just to make sure everything is aligned. And we should. Um, she promised they get that done pretty quickly. But then, uh, there's gonna be a lot of wait and see after that. You know, O and R needs to do some work and our our vendor has everything kind of, they know who to contact and all that, so they'll do they'll do the legwork. But realistically, you know, let's say we sign this and get an agreement for in a year. We'll have to wait till spring anyway to start that, well, as long as there's not a lot of snow, but we'll probably have to wait to start that work. But given everything, I I mean, I ran the numbers and if the the gross system value for the bid is three hundred, around three hundred two thousand. And but given all the incentives of Nicerda, uh, the grants and everything, we will be out of pocket around six thousand dollars total.
Wow, that's that's amazing.
Which is, which is great.
Great.
Right? But, you know, the 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 system specs, they're removing some panel, but they're have lesser panels, but they're better quality and so we should have around the same kilowatt hours produced. But anyways, that's moving along. And you'll see, again, before you sign something, we'll have to send it to Nicerda, but I don't know, will we need another motion or resolution, Isabel, what do you think? Before we accept or sign this contract?
Before you send it to Nicerda or?
No, before we execute the contract.
Once it's already been reviewed and everything?
Yeah.
Will you have to, similar to what we did, um, have a resolution to approve?
To approve the, and have the mayor sign the same, okay.
Yeah, okay.
So I don't know if the red lines will be done by the next meeting or not, probably doubtful, but we'll see.
We'll see.
Other than that, I think that's, I think that's it. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, one more thing. Uh, we get twenty five percent of the grant upon signing contract. But the remaining we don't get until it's finished. So we're going to have to outlay those funds temporarily, I've already spoken to Sadie about this.
I was gonna say.
But we'll do another loan from?
I don't know.
A loan to ourselves.
Oh, a loan to ourselves, yeah, from another fund and then, right. That's what it seems.
Okay, that's good. Um, I have a few things, um, did you have anything else? A couple of weeks ago, um, there was a Zoom call with our local food pantries, um, farmer's market, um, folks. Just people who were definitely very concerned and and wanting to make a difference because of the endangered SNAP funding. And what came out of that was something pretty remarkable, uh, which involved our regional food food bank. And on a pretty lovely day, Saturday, I don't know how many volunteers, I would say.
I think they said a hundred.
A hundred volunteers, uh, set up a drive through food bank or food pantry in the town park. Uh, it was just a wonderful thing to see the the number of volunteers and just the process of getting all these baskets and bags ready for, you know, potential of people coming through. Uh, I wanna just shout out to Jesse Dwyer, our town supervisor, who did just tremendous amount of legwork to get this done, working with the food pantries, our our local food pantries uh, and to make it happen, so it was just a really, it was really great to see and I think it helped a lot of people. And it was a bridge because days afterwards, the SNAP funding was 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 still, um, you know, was not endangered or it doesn't seem to be as endangered as it was. So, uh, so that was a great thing. I also want to report that our New York Forward application has been submitted. And I've been kind of keeping the board posted about that. Uh, it was definitely very intense towards the end. And Carly can speak to that, right? We we received a draft form from our grant writer and recognized that there was a lot of work that had to be done. So, um, and collectively it was done and with the help of the clerk's office, Carly, um, myself, we all kind of put the pieces together to create what I think is a very strong application. Uh, so I'm very excited about that, we'll we'll see what happens. Good, that's good, that's a good sign. And coming up this.
Thanks for doing all that.
Well, very important and, you know, it's it's all about downtown revitalization, but the ripple effects of that and and what that means to our community. We came very close last year and so hopefully, uh, this is the charm. Uh, but coming up this Thursday is the Chamber Gala and, um, as the 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 chief of police was mentioning that they'll be honoring our police force, our police for the work that they do for Apple Fest, which is incredible. But they're also going to be celebrating our Department of Public Works, the village's Department of Public Works, for the work that they do year round to create this incredibly beautiful, safe village. And, uh, you know, it's not just roads, it's not just ditches and it's it's everything from.
It's the Chamber Office Building.
It's the Chamber Office Building, they, we changed their light bulbs. But no, I mean, it's, uh, there's so many partnerships that we have, whether it's with the Chamber of Commerce or with the Historical Society or with the Warwick Valley Gardeners. These groups are all helping to make this just the most remarkable community. And and what we do as, in terms of the Department of Public Works is essential. We're we're the kind of team muscle and legwork for a lot of these activities. And we're like the really glorified stagehands to make this stage as beautiful as it is. So, um, so I'm I'm very excited that they they made that selection, I thought it was perfect.
Yeah, deserved.
Um, and then finally, I just wanna wish everyone on behalf of this board a very happy Thanksgiving. It's my favorite holiday, it's all about eating.
Mine too.
So we still have comments from the public and the public has gone, so final comments from the board, anybody wanna say anything? You know, I think today, or this evening was a testament on working together and trying to figure things out. It's hard, it's hard, there are gray areas in everything. And so, you know, the the thought processes that this board goes through to make, you know, very thoughtful decisions is is important. And I think I think the public sees that, I I hope they do because I think that it's part of our strength. Whether we all agree or don't agree or partially agree, it doesn't matter. What 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 is most important is that we're analyzing and doing the the real legwork to make these decisions. And 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 I think that that, um, I am very proud of you for that. So with that, we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Second?
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Thank you. Terrified you were gonna say executive session.